Case 0618, excuse-- 0618 variance, Article 2552 and 2552. William Bovier, he has requested that be continued. And I have a letter here, we'll take that up with a vote later. Case number 0718 variance, Article 2410, David and Barbara Hibbin. And that is going to be heard this evening. And another one we have is case number 0818 variance, 1711, building on a Class VI road. And with that said, I'd like people to judge themselves.
Mark Moretti, member.
Stu Richman, member.
Michael Meyer, member.
Malcolm Wright, member.
Thank you. Just an overview of how this is the variance, we have variances tonight. So what we do is, I will read the front page of the variance so everybody knows why we're here. And then I will ask if there's a motion to accept the application to be heard. The intent of that is to verify that the case has been properly filled out and we can hear the case on that. Should we find after we vote to accept it, there's something structurally wrong with the application once we get into it, we then have the option to continue it for the more information or ask the applicant to withdraw it in case it needs a lot of work. But anyways, so as we do, once we approve to hear the case this evening, I will read the talk page like I mentioned. I will ask the applicant to come forwards and then we will ask the board if they have any questions before the applicant hears, presents, in this case, the five points of hardship. After that, being none or satisfied, the board, I will ask the applicant to write, to read the questions of the five points of hardship and the answers that they have completed on the application. Reason for that is, not everybody in the room has what we have up here. Not everybody at home watching it has what we have up here. So everybody be able to hear the questions and the answers. And it goes into the record as a result of that. After that, I will ask the board if they have any further questions of the applicant. Being none, I will ask the applicant to sit down. And I'll ask if any approving butters in the audience wish to speak in favor of the application. After that, finish disapproving, people are against application. Other boards, should they wish to say anything? And public at large. After that's done, I'll ask the applicant if he wishes to come back again. Everybody think that may have been said. After that, I'll ask him to sit down, go through it one more time. Approving butters, disapproving butters, public at large, other boards. After that, we'll shut the public part of the hearing down. And the board will deliberate each of the five points of hardship. Each one will be taken individually with a motion to accept. We always request a motion to be made in the positive. So yes means yes, no means no. It's real simple. And then we'll go through each one of these. Each of the five prongs need to get at least three yes votes on each question. They don't have to be the same people every time, but each one requires to get three yeses. If there's no, if you do not get on any one, three, you get less than three, it fails. And this is sort of like all prongs of the variance request need to be found and reaffirmed with at least three votes. So with that, ready to take up Mr. Bovier? Any other questions? Okay. We have had a request on Mr. Bovier's case. We did continue it last time. I gave the applicant the option to consider going to get some additional information. So we continued it from last month. So this is the meeting it was continued to. So we have a letter here requesting from John L. Arnold, from Hickley Associate, Hickley Allen. And it's, Dear Chairman Dearborn, members of the zoning board, this letter's requesting continuance to ZBA hearing scheduled August 7th in connection with the above titled matter to September 4th. We're not meeting on the 4th, we're meeting on the 11th. So we will, if we get a positive vote on this, we'll move it to the 11th. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to continue the Bovier hearing.
Okay.
Second to the 11th.
Thank you. Stu made that and Malcolm seconded. Any discussion? All those a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's five zero. So that has been put off till September 11th. Okay. Next one is from, this case, 0718. And let's see. This is for applicant David Hibbin. Address 14 Gould Road, Wayne, New Hampshire. Owner the same, address the same. Property address Gould Road, Wayne, New Hampshire, tax map lot 109-1, 109-2. And property dimensions, basically Gould Road frontage 325 approximate, Westerly side 435 approximate, north-northwest side, parallel to the stone wall 334, east side 492. Net area for proposed home is 2.04 acres. Proposed use or existing is affected. Proposal, proposal is for request to erect a home on a two-acre commercially zoned lot, which is also in current use. So why does your proposed use require an appeal to the zoning vote adjustment? Article 2410 states that building, building, a building a residential home on a commercial property is not permitted. Okay. With that said, the application has the documentation checked off on the checklist. It has the five points of hardship filled out. It has list of butters, two pages. We have a map, unsigned by the owners or by the surveyor. And there is also a, here's to be an excerpt of the tax map. Now, is there a new map this evening?
Yes, there is.
Where would that map be?
I have several copies right here.
You're welcome to bring them down. Are you going to speak on behalf of the applicant?
If necessary, I will.
Okay. Well, let's first see the map first.
This map is--
Your name, sir?
My name is Dennis McHoney, I'm the land surveyor. This map is slightly different from the one that you have. It has incorporated some changes as a result of the planning board meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, just, you have stamped and signed that, correct?
Yes, yes. I color coded one copy. We've basically gone to the planning board for a lot line adjustment and taken the small tract formerly owned by the town. Hibbin's acquired that some days ago and expanded that to take a non-conforming existing lot and enlarge it to a conforming lot in terms of area and frontage.
Okay. So this will be the document you want us to go forward with tonight?
Certainly.
Who would like to present the five points of hardship?
Would you like to hear it?
Mr. Hibbin, come on down.
We both have, we both have something to say.
Do you want the language to ask Brad? We're going to show version.
Like I mentioned, if you would read the five points of hardship, including the questions, so that we can have them in the minutes.
Okay. The name's Dave Hibbin, 14 Gould Road. And I've met a lot of you gentlemen. It's not you though. Anyway, I think on the application, the variance, it says, the article, okay. What we'd like to do is erect a home on a two-acre lot, 200-foot frontage on Gould Road, which meets the requirement of the town. You have 200-foot frontage and you have two acres. And it's all owned by the applicant. We own the land, 20, it was 18 acres we were paying for, but now we found out we got 20. So the home will be positioned such that the buffer zone requirements will all be met, displacement between septic and H2O systems will be achieved. Now, the granting the variance will not be contrary to public interest.
That's questionable.
We're downsizing, okay? And to make it a real long story short, I retired in 93 and I started a business after that and it lasted about 20 years and then I had a little heart problem. And we're recovering from that very nicely, have been for the last three years. But what we'd like to do is put up a structure. It'll be a double-width manufactured home. And I'll go into the details, the reason for that. It'll be, it'll be nice to the neighborhood. I won't hurt the property, minimum abuse to the property. We'll be putting down a pad instead of digging foundations and everything because we're selling the property to a granddaughter and her husband. It's going to stay in the family. And it'll be, it'll not be an eyesore. They're very attractive homes. And because the land is, I'm picking that piece of land, it's because within that envelope is already a lot with a manufactured home on it. Okay, so it's just going to be complimentary and we're still trying to maintain the residential area, okay? We are zoned commercially. As you know, on this picture, you can see the whole area down there is zoned commercially, the whole area, Langtart store and everything, all the way up past your house is zoned commercially. But the other side of the street is agricultural. On our side of the street is commercial. And we didn't vote for that, it just was impressed on us, okay? Anyway, it's going to be an attractive property and it'll be right next door to another manufactured And the reason is, there's another reason for going that way is, in a few years, we're just planning ahead, okay? And I'm 87, my wife's 87, and we're still throwing baseball curves. But that day will come when we want. If either one of us die, we can't afford the farm anymore, okay? The home in the areas have existed long before they were zoned commercially.
Would you read question two?
Oh, excuse me. The variance requested will not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance because, okay? And the homes in the area have existed for a long time before before commercial. And the use now, that the problem is, the use variance is the problem. We have to go before you people before we can put up a structure. The third question is that through the granting of the relief by the variance, substantial justice will be done because, number one, it allowed my wife and I to erect a manufactured home on the property, the most economical way to do it. It will allow the farm and associate property to remain in the family. It will maintain the overall residence, residential status of the neighborhood. It'll be up in the upper pasture with trees on three sides and you won't even notice it unless you fly over it. Nobody, it won't end. We'll be able to stay in the area. The next question is that by granting the variance, the values of the surrounding property will be not diminished. I think, I think there's a lot of other things that created problems. It will maintain the residential status of the immediate area and that's from my stone wall towards Gould Road, okay? The next door neighbor that's going to be, my closest neighbor is Pat Lovering and she lives in the manufactured home. To qualify for the variance, you must demonstrate the denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship. Pursuant to the application law, the test for unnecessary hardship is set forth in two parts, A and B. Unnecessary hardship means that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, no fair substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance and the specific application of the provision to the property. And the proposed use is a reasonable one. According to, while having the foregoing standard, Part A in mind, please provide the following facts relative to the application. Please describe the special conditions your property distinguishes from others. Well, it's, it's a well-maintained farm, farm land. It provides a sanctuary for wildlife, birds, animals. I have to chuckle because people after Easter and things drop off animals, we gained two rabbits, so anyway. Animals as well as for domestic animals. We've even been blessed with a, with a fisher cat the other night that would wake up the dead. But on the highway Route 114, there's a small ice cream shop that provides fresh fruit and vegetables seasonally, and that's been there since 1981. We've lived there since 1976. Conversely, there is a small mall next door and across it is 114 storage facility. We're a unique farm and the other are a little small mall and a storage facility which I think, I don't think I would hurt that property. So anyway, next. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provided, a provision, and the specific application of that provision to the property. Chip Meany said it's a lar and denied us the permission to erect any type of structure on the property because, and it's referenced to Article 2410. And that meant no stick home, no modular home, and no manufactured home. And how the proposed use is a reasonable one, my wife and I are both 87 years old. We're downsizing. We have to if we want to maintain some semblance of respectability in life. The farm will be in the family and we've lived there for 42 years and it'll remain in the family. And the community will remain a residential neighborhood in a commercial zone. And then B, the criteria in subparagraph A are not established as unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if only if, owing to special conditions of the property, distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance. And the variance is therefore necessary to enable the reasonable use of it. It's a 20-acre farm on a residential street, Gould Road's residential. Right across the street from us is rural land where the residential neighbors along the street. To the north and beyond the stone wall is the shopping mall. To the east across is the storage facility and Billy Bovier's facility. And I don't see where we are hurting any of that property by putting this structure up.
Any questions for Mr. Hibbin before I ask if there's other butters? Being none, Mr. Hibbin, you may have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
You may want to sit right up front here, but I haven't got backup yet. Any approving butters wish to speak on behalf of this application? Disapproving butters wish to speak?
Can I speak?
You're welcome to.
No, no, I just--
No, you have to get up front if you want to speak. Okay. Any disapproving butters wish to speak?
I approve.
Public at large, other boards? Being none. Hibbin, would you wish to rebut any things that have been said?
Just wanted to make a couple of points relative to the five questions. With respect to the first one, whether or not it's contrary to the public interest, there is noted on the plan, there's actually a deed that, on record, that involves the town in recognition of the fact that there's a residential use of the property in existence.
Would that be the trailer?
No, it's relative to their present home. And the book and page is on there. With respect to number two, the spirit of the ordinance, there is a provision in your zoning ordinance which actually encourages, or allows that if you expand a non-conforming lot to meet certain criteria, you can build on it. So I think that addresses, at least in part, that spirit of the ordinance. Number three, with respect to, you know, is it a, is a yes vote a just vote? I'm from out of town, but there's a lot of mixed use in the area there now. There's heavy industry, there's plenty of residential on both sides of Gould Road, and there's certainly a lot of commercial in the area. And I think that the, number five, that the reasonableness of the request is apparent. It again speaks to the mixed use of the area in terms of putting another residence in there is certainly not, not unique to the area immediately adjacent to the Hibbin property or the general nature of Gould Road if you go back and forth. So thank you.
Did I add one thing?
Sure, Dave, come on up.
The property is, is zoned commercially, but on the property you have a cemetery. Okay, so, you know, it's supposed to be in rural, so we'll make that rural cemetery. But that's just a little byline. And I don't see where we're hurting anything. I don't see where we can do anything. And at some point in time, after both my wife and I have joined the neighbors up on Route 149, my grandson-in-law may want to remove that. And this is the easiest way to get out of it because you won't have to be filling up a hole in the field.
Very good. Any approving butters wish to speak? For the second time, disapproving butters, public at large, other boards? At that point, I'm going to shut down the public hearing and I will accept a motion for Article 4, Prong 1. Move to accept. Second? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Being none, all those a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Prong two, please.
Move to accept Prong 2.
Thank you. Second, Mark. Discussion, being none, all those a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Three, please.
Prong three? Yeah, move to accept that.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion, being none, all those a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. Four? Move to accept four? Thank you, second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion, being none, all those a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. And five is in entirety?
Move to accept Article, Prong 5 in its entirety.
Thank you. Second, thank you. Discussion, being none, all those a favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero. See Chip, he'll figure out what you got to do to get your building.
Okay, push me up.
The subdivision needs to be approved by the planning board.
Come here.
The subdivision needs to be approved by the planning board.
Sure.
Is it done?
You slept on it.
Oh, thank you so much.
Have a nice day.
Oh, wow. You don't know how I've been trying to-- I felt like I was going before a tribunal. Oh, this is great. Oh, this is great. Thank you so much.
Next case.
Cool off.
Thanks for all the work. Wow. Okay.
Thank you, look. You're welcome, Dave. Thank you.
Dave, it's good to see you again.
Mindy's black.
Moving along to 0818. This is case 0818. Owner is Judith Schamenti. Eight Boulder Lane, New Hampton.
I'll take one, you can throw the rest away.
Okay. Property, address, location, Horsepring Hill Road, residential. Tax map and lot, map 409, lot 168, 69, and 70. And property, property for lot 168 is 299, frontage, side 900 approximately. Rear line is two points, rear is 275 with 5.84 acres. Lot 169 is frontage 299, side approximately 150, rear is 275, 6.69 acres. And lot 170 is frontage 299 feet, side approximately 1200, and rear is 287, 88 acres. Lots, the lots are currently vacant. Proposed use is residential. Why does your proposed use require an appeal to the zoning vote of adjustment? The lots were created in 1971 prior to the town zoning, adopting zoning ordinance. Horsepring Hill Road is a Class VI road, not maintained by the town. Therefore, the road does not qualify as frontage or not equally 1711. New billing permits on Class VI, so let's permit it. We have a checklist filled out. We have five points of hardship completed. We have butters. We have a design for a driveway plan as it exits, leaves Gould Road, goes-- As it exits, leaves Gould Road, goes onto the first, goes through the Class 6 road, past the first lot, and enters into the second lot and appears for the second or third lot, which would be 169 and 170. Your intentions for the two lots? Very good. This point, oh, we also have a original, 1971. Looks like a sign. Some scratches there. And there's also a tax map, except for the tax map. With that said, motion to accept.
Mr. Chan, just a question.
Yeah.
Is this critical? Is this part of the application being not completed?
It's a save.
Okay, just making sure.
It's blank for the applicant's address. Is Judith here? You representing Judith?
Yes.
Okay. Where is that in this package? Yep, right on the back, sorry. Yep. Motion to accept. Move to accept case 0818.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero.
First of all, I might as well get out of the way. Judith has sold the property to my clients, Jim Mallett and Kim Johnson, since the application was made.
Got it. Who are you representing?
Who do you want me to represent? I'm allowed to represent Judith.
Well, listed owner.
Listed owner on the application is Judith. At that time Judith owned it, since then Jim Mallett and Kim Johnson bought it. My contract is with the current owner.
The property's been closed, though?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
This is the same plan that you have, just a little bigger. A lot bigger, actually. Five points of hardship for the five points.
Does the board have any questions of Craig before we let him start?
Can I make a nice introduction and show you where the property is and explain what's going on first?
Sure. But there's no questions on the board for Craig?
No.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead.
You're confused.
I'll catch up, I think. If my question gets ripe, I'll ask it.
Okay. This is River Road, approximately, oh, I've written down this map. About a mile, Cuthbert Park Road, about four tenths of a mile to Barnard Hill Road. And this is Barnard Hill Road, loops around and looks back into River Road. Several, a couple of years ago, I don't know how many years ago, two or three, I believe in applications in front of the board who access Barnard Hill.
By recollection, that was pulled by the applicant because he couldn't demonstrate the ability to meet the pitch going down for a driveway.
So when we first looked at it visually, it seemed that River Road was easy, was better placed back. I should have backed up. These three lots were created in that 1971 subdivision. There were several more left here, with the frontage being Horsepring Hill Road. When we looked at it, we took over from Barnard Hill, River Road, and a little bit on the lots. Coming off Barnard Hill, it's pretty obvious when you start looking at it, the first 50 feet's about 38 percent. The next 50 feet, 14 percent. So it's going to be really hard to catch up with a 10 percent driveway. Coming off River Road, it's not great either. About 20 percent of the first 50 feet, and 9 percent of the next 50 feet. And that basically gets you almost onto the lot. Once we get onto the lot, we can show it here, we could turn it River Road 1 and 2 later, flatter at that point. So we're showing the driveway coming off Barnard Hill, or off River Road, excuse me. We go down at 2 percent, then up at 10 percent for the town regs. It's tight, but we were able to stay within the Horsepring Hill right away until we get to lot 168, which is our client's, my client's property. Then we turn to the left to get on the property. That's basically the introduction I was going to have before I get into the five points. Number one, the granting of variance will not be contrary to the public interest because the property is zoned residential. Single-family houses are permitted in the zone. The house will be set back, there will be a front setback from Horsepring Hill Road, just like there is on the other road, and it will meet all the building codes. The driveway from River Road along Horsepring Hill Road to access the lots will be constructed to meet the driveway regulations, so the emergency vehicles, et cetera, will be able to access the site. Number two, the variance requested will not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. The ordinance prohibits the issuance of building permits on Class 6 roads as a general rule. The town has allowed building permits for residential dwellings on Class 6 roads in the past. Again, these parts of the zone residential. And the variance would allow the lots to be used for the zoning ordinance. Number three, through the granting of relief by a variance, substantial justice will be done to these because the lots were created in 71, prior to zoning, the town zoned these lots residential when the zoning was passed. The lots meet all existing zoning requirements for residential zone, except for frontage. And the only reason they don't meet the frontage classification is because it's a Class 6 road. Substantial justice will be done because the residential zone lots were created for this exact purpose. Number four, by granting the variance, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. The area is somewhat rural while being zoned residential. The proposed houses will be adequately buffered from the existing natural vegetation. And the building of a new house on a vacant lot in a residential area, residential zone, certainly shouldn't be diminishing values. Number five, the unnecessary hardship. A, please describe the special condition of your property to distinguish it from other properties. Well, distinguishing properties, the only frontage is on a Class 6 road. The owner has explored accessing from Barnard Hill. And it's pretty obvious to me that River Road access is a much, while not ideal, is much better. The view for the public from River Road, it would just look like another driveway. You wouldn't be able to see the houses or anything else. And please indicate how owing to the special conditions identified above, no fair or substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and specific application of that provision to this property. The driveway be constructed to town specs. The specs require 12 feet wide with two feet shoulders. There are many other specifications, including 10 percent slopes. You have to have pull-offs for emergency, you have to have a turnaround, which all these specifications we met when accessing from River Road. And how they propose use is reasonable. Proposed use of single-family home on each lot, use consistent with the other residential zone lots in the area. I meant the B, sorry. Please describe the special condition of property to distinguish from other properties in the area. The access is what distinguishes it from other lots, because the access has to be from Horsepring Hill Road, which is Class 6. Please indicate how owing to the special conditions identified above, your property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use. Well, the lots were created in 71 to be used as residential lots. The town adopted zoning in 88, and the properties were zoned residential. The granting this variance allows the plots to be used as they were, purpose they were created in, according to zoning ordinance.
Any questions for Mr. Francisco before we go around and ask for Butters or such? Being none? All those in favor of the application, would you please come forward? Butters, all those not approving of Butters, please come forward, being none. All the boards, public and large, being none. You wish to say anything else, Mr. Craig?
Nope.
See if you're getting out.
Less important questions, no?
Thank you. Okay. Typically, what we do here is put a set of conditions on, and I'd like the board to consider these, and I'll make an informal motion. First condition is that there will be a sign posted at the transition of River Road and Horsepring Road, wherever the town road agent deems is appropriate. The reason is, not because of that, but this is the first time this road, that road used to go across River Road back prior to 1958, when the flood control was put in, they put a new road, River Road. And basically, it terminated that road as being passable. So this is the first time that I can recall that a road entrance on a Class 6 road has been improved onto a Class 5. So that's important. So this is for the posting, consistent with the town aware's road sign policy. Number two is requiring a disclaimer to be placed in the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, a disclaimer file showing that this property is not on a Class 5 road, and the standard language is provided through Chip. Number three would be, we want to make sure, number four. Number three, I want to make sure that in addition to the placement of the sign, that the public works director is okay with the design and the shape of this. Okay? And number four, I want to make sure that 911 response, meaning the fire department, and I believe the Board of Fire Wards is responsible for doing this. Making sure that there's proper signage for that road on River Road, so that when somebody tones out for an emergency, they know where it is and they know what lots are on. Any other conditions? So I will ask that motion for a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Will it build to the driveway standard?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
This town road should be built to the, what is your zoning, is it number 36? Last one, right there.
And approved by the Board of Select.
That's their business. Article 36, the driveway is to be designed consistent with Article 36 of the zoning ordinance, which details how driveways are supposed to be constructed to allow life, safety, equipment, and personnel to respond. Chip mentioned 67441, that's the select board's business. That needs to be done anyways. So that's addition to this. But the fifth one is consistent with a compliant with Article 36 of the aware zoning ordinance. Thank you.
So that, the motion that I made covered the first four parts of what you wanted to do here, so we're going to have to amend that and put the fifth.
Okay. Why don't I just pull the motion away and then make a new motion? Want me to make it?
Go ahead.
Okay. Number one, we want to make sure that the road sign postage for a Class 6 private road is done appropriately to the town aware. Number two is disclaimer is provided in the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds. Number three, making sure that the signing of that is done appropriately for the new access onto River Road. We want the public works director to approve that. Number four is making sure we have life safety, appropriate signage on the road for the access to Horsepring, whatever that road's going to be named, probably the same, Horsepring Hill Road. And the final one is make sure that this driveway access off of River Road up to the dwellings will be consistent with Article 36, excuse me. And number six, while I'm here, we need to make sure that there is no more than two lots that are accessed by this application, because if they wanted three, they should have asked for a variance for more than two on a lot. Driveway servicing, no more than two lots. So I'm putting the condition here that you could either combine two, rework a three into two, however you want to do it, but there can only be two lots serviced by this. So those are the six conditions on this. Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Being none? All those in favor?
Aye.
So these are the accepted conditions. So what on Prong 1?
Move to accept Prong 1.
Thank you, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion, being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No?
No.
Five zero. You're a no?
No.
Four one. Malcolm vote, no.
Move to accept number two, Prong 2.
Yep, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion, being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four one. Three?
Move to accept three. I will second that.
Second? Thank you, still. Discussion, being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four one. And?
Move to, one, four.
Four.
Yep, move to accept four.
I'll second.
Discussion, being none? Aye?
Aye.
No?
No.
Four one.
Move to accept.
Fine and tidy?
Move to accept five in its entirety.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
There seems to be a trend developing with these lots.
Which lot?
I want to bring these lots on Class 6 roads, so.
Okay.
We get here and we hear the great testimony, but it all boils down to the only hardship you have is the zoning ordinance itself. Section A, number five, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. The only condition is the ordinance itself. By granting these types of variances, we're not, this is spot zoning. I understand the feelings around this, but we are not the planning board, and we're not the selectmen, and we're not the voters of the town. And I think that we're stepping outside of our authority by granting these kinds of variances, when the only hardship that's been presented is the ordinance itself. The ordinance needs to be changed.
No.
We can't change this by this kind of voting. And I'm not going to talk anymore about it, I just had to say that.
Let me just, anything in the, anything in the zoning ordinance... Let me just, anything in the, anything in those, in the zoning ordinance, the articles can be variance. There is no language that can be put in there that cannot be variance, okay?
I agree.
That's addition number one. These are very consistent with what's in the lots. The only thing they miss is having frontage on a Class 6, excuse me, Class 5 road, right? So, they asked that this be a reasonable use. A residential zone lot, amongst other ones, compliant with a zoning, is a reasonable use. A gas station, a commercial endeavor, may not be considered a reasonable use in the area. And the other one is hardship. And that includes not only hardship for the property, but since they relaxed, I think it was on the simplex case, they now have reasonable use. And hardship is now considered to be not only just, you have a rock in the way you can't get around, the question becomes, is it a financial hardship? So, to that end, if somebody wanted something on a compliant lot for a house, and just wanted it, and it faced an issue of relaxation of a sideline or a front line, that becomes that becomes an issue. But here, a reasonable use, what other reasonable use of this property is there other than growing trees and weeds? So, this is where the true binary of the old five points of hardship was very stringent on giving variances. This allows the zoning board to consider reasonable use and unnecessary hardship. So, I think that's what we're doing here because without this, they've already tried exhausting the other approach. Another applicant has tried exhausting the other approach. If this was not a, how should I say it? A tour area, it was in the end of Gettysburg Road or out in Husky subdivision, we have, we have shown that we've turned those down because it's premature. This is building that there's really another use for the building lot other than growing trees. And I don't believe that's a reasonable hardship. I mean, I don't think that's a hardship that we shouldn't just say tough. I think those are the two issues is, under the old version of the five points of hardship, very difficult to get a hardship and reasonable use. The language itself in the prong five says reasonable use and hardship, unreasonable hardship. So, if not else, what else would they do with this piece of property? We, and the biggest problem that the courts have pushed back on with 67441 is life, safety, vehicles, apparatus, personnel, making it up in cases of issue. That's the principal reason for 67441 was done by the state. Because up to that point, unincorporated land, towns without any zoning, were just handing out building permits. So, the state stepped in originally back in the 90s, whenever it was, or 80s, and said there must be adequate access. And that's why they asked the select board to go consider that. When they put a prohibition for any building on Class 6 or private roads, that's why they come before the zoning. So, under the current questions that are being asked, I don't think this is violating any intent of the zoning, to be honest. So, we provide reasonable access, and we have the Board of Fire wards and the Public Works Director go off and validate the design is appropriate. Now, if it's something that the fire chief sees or Benji doesn't like, because we asked for that to be put in these conditions, they go off and make this safer to their eyes beyond the Article 36. Other than that, I don't know what to say. I mean, that's the case it is today.
I appreciate what you said. And I wish I was wrong, how I feel, but I just don't think I am. I, it's a sticky wicket. I just don't think that you've made the unnecessary hardship argument. But that's, that's all I can say.
Okay. Thank you.
It's an uncomfortable vote.
Move to accept five in its entirety.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four, one. Thank you. Thank you. Take your stuff with you. Have a good night. Okay, minutes, I think we ought to wait. Frankly, I didn't finish my review.
I haven't read them.
Yeah. They were sent out directly by
We've only had them for a couple of days.
Right. Now, one other thing that Chip did, which is good, we are now into the 21st century for computer assisted applications, meaning that Chip finally has found somebody, and it's Beth Bruce, who's a financial person in the town. She basically took the questions and left, and then the PDF form, so you can't modify the questions. But there's areas underneath these questions that allows you to type in whatever dialogues you want to enter, so we don't have to rely on people's necessary hand scratching and/or people's C attached, and then they use a different set of questions, which we ended up throwing people out to come back with a lot of questions. So, I've got a copy, I'll send it out. I think I sent you Mike a copy tonight. You may, may have happened before you
I'll check on it.
It looks the same as this form, but you can, you can basically personalize the area for your conditions or for your testimony you want to have. And then, we'll take a look at that. And I, my intention is it looks fine. Bill has reviewed, our attorney has reviewed the questions, and he approved it. So, with that said, we'll consider doing it for the initial appeal and the special exception. And I think there's another one running around.
Equitable waiver.
Equitable waiver. And we gotta figure out. Essentially, we shouldn't have to have people running around with scraps of paper anymore. We should be able to do it online.
Well, people will still have to come in and physically file because of the attachments that have to go with this.
We're not preventing people
The maps and everything else that has to be filed, but they can do it online. There'll be no, there'll be no reason to have to handwrite an application.
Great. Or do a cut and paste. The other thing is, I guess we will still allow handwritten ones for those people that don't have computers. Well, computers do. Principally, 99 percent. Takes us 10 years to get there, but 99 percent should be done. Any other? Do they go on this? 10 minutes this week? Well. Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second? Let's go. All in favor?
Aye.